Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Dave Crouch and this is the Town Hall Meeting that's sponsored monthly by our Williamson, Inc., the Williamson County Chamber of Commerce. And we're glad to have a bright-eyed and very verbose audience here at Columbia State this morning. We, a lot of visiting going on on this kind of dreary morning, so it's good to have everybody with us. Appreciate our TV and radio audience joining us and look forward to learning a lot from our guests this morning. We, our special guests this morning are Mayor Jill Bergen from the city of Brentwood and City Manager Kirk Bednar. And Jill, Kirk, we're glad to have you and looking forward to learning a lot about what's going on in Brentwood. It's been awfully quiet the last couple of years, the last few months, anyway.
That's the way we like it.
We're gonna try to uncover something this morning that, that might give us a little insight into what's going on up there. But we, first of all, let's just learn a little bit about you, Mayor Bergen. You are a mom, got three boys, I think. What age boys are yours?
I have three sons, two of whom are twins who are 22-years-old. They are up at University of Tennessee in Knoxville right now. And I have a freshman at Brentwood High School who's 15 and learning how to drive. And so, y'all watch out for a black Jeep going up and down Concord Road out there.
That's great. I know that keeps you busy. You're a Memphis native, been here a few years?
About 27 years now.
Okay. And background looks like in journalism. So is that your passion? Was that how you got interested in politics?
I guess so, because I used to work for Williamson AM at the Tennessee and I used to be a copy editor there. And I wrote a weekly column about life in Williamson County. It was supposed to be a funny humorous look at life in Williamson County. And through that job, I had to ask a lot of questions. And so that sort of put me in touch with folks at the city, I guess. And when there were two open seats coming up on the City Commission one year, a friend of mine suggested that I run for one of them just because of that kind of connection. So I think that's that background, though, that kind of makes me a pain in the butt at some of the meetings.
Kirk, is that true?
No.
You'll deny that forever. Tell us a little bit about you, Kirk. How, where are you from? How'd you land in Brentwood?
Originally from Northern Illinois, so I'm one of those Yankees that come down here and never leaves. But I've been in Middle Tennessee since 1995, moved up here from Texas, was working for the city of Fort Worth, Texas. Came here in 95, working for the University of Tennessee for about five years, and then came to be the Assistant City Manager in Brentwood in 2000. So I've been with Brentwood a little over 18 years. And was appointed City Manager in January of 2013, when Mike Walker retired. So coming up on six years in that position.
Great. So you've seen a lot, a lot of changes going on in Brentwood over the years. And like I said, the, just looking at Brentwood from kind of the 30,000-foot level, it just seems like everything's peaceful, no controversies. A little different than it was a couple of years ago. I remember in 2015, we had kind of an interesting election for City Commission. Mayor Bergen, what happened? I mean, everybody's getting along. And what was the controversies over and how have they kind of been resolved?
Oh, where do I start? I mean, I think that when you get a community like Brentwood, folks really take true ownership and they care so much about what happens there. Once they choose to live there and they invest there significantly, they really don't want it to change a lot from when they first chose it. So we have a lot of folks who are quite involved with what's going on. And, you know, they, because our staff does such a great job, everything does seem to be really peaceful and running well, which it is, I would say 99% of the time. And occasionally, when we have some new ideas that come up, it scares folks sometimes. And so they, they get nervous. And sometimes, there are some people who like to ask questions first, but there are other people who don't necessarily want to do that and they just want to react first. So we have to spend a lot of time dealing with them and explaining things, listening to their point of view, understanding what it is they're concerned about. And, you know, that's happened, and it's been a good thing because over the years, we've had developments come up like Hill Center. The initial idea for Hill Center, folks really reacted strongly to. And that was right when I joined the board in my first term. And what we did, ended up doing was, we worked with the residents, worked with the developer, and he came back and actually tweaked the plan enough to where people were pretty happy with it. And I think after a few years of, of living with that development, I mean, you'd be hard-pressed to find anybody who doesn't think it's a good thing for Brentwood. So it's a, it's been a, a great learning process for me, but I think it's been overall good for, for Brentwood in general.
The, I'll never forget, that was one of the City Commission Meetings I've been to when that project was approved. And I was expecting a lot of discussion. It just went through smoothly.
And I think that was probably the end of about a year and a half process, though, of serious conflict and concern. And, you know, we handled it well, but there were some times there where people really did get tense about it. And it's just part of the process when you've got folks who care about what's going on, so.
Right. Kirk, as I was kind of doing my, my homework, actually, last night, looking at-
Don't start too early, Dave.
You know, something might change if I got prepared too early here. But looking at the agenda for planning commissions, city commissions, that sort of thing, I saw something I've never, ever in my public interest, knowledge, ever seen before. And that was a city commission agenda, and every item on the agenda was on the consent agenda. Ann Peterson, have you ever seen that in Franklin? For those of you who don't know what a consent agenda is, it is a one-vote package of items that are considered non-controversial, and they're all passed with a voice vote with one vote. And I've never seen that. How do you explain managing to do that?
Well, again, each city has their own different systems and processes and stuff. And so, I mean, the reality is, in Brentwood, you know, we're a very well-established community, not quite built out, but getting there. So we don't have as many land use issues as are going on in most of the other communities in Williamson County. And that's often what drives a very active agenda. So you just happened to pick one where we had, you know, a few months before that, you would have saw several rezonings that were on the cycle of things. But every once in a while, you'll get a thing where it's kind of routine purchases, budgeted items, things that have been discussed by the commission in the past, even if they may be a little higher dollar items, or things that have been planned and, and again, we've worked through. So that, it's just a cycle of an agenda, and, and sometimes it lines up that way, but not always. But, you know, we've got systems in place that allow certain amount of administrative approval for things that don't always have to go on the City Commission Agenda. Other communities do it differently. So in our case, it really ebbs and flows, and you just, you found one that it lined up that way.
That, that was amazing. I couldn't believe it when I saw that. Thumbing through the budget for 2018, 19, just usually where I can find something controversial. And let me give you a little background on my perspective on this. But back in the 80s, I remember there was a lot of concern that Brentwood wasn't gonna have enough commercial property and, and commercial property taxes to pay the bills, that it was gonna be all residential and there just wasn't gonna be enough commercial property taxes and, and sales tax to, to pay the bills. But as I was going over your budget, it, it mentioned that for 28 straight years, you've had the same tax rate. You haven't had to raise taxes in 28 years. How do you do that?
Well, it's certainly not me or my predecessors. I mean, obviously, we, we are the ones who present the budget and kind of put it together for the commission to, to adopt. But it starts with the city commissioners and the, and the vision that they give the staff for the city and how they expect it to be run. But I learned from my predecessor, Mike Walker, and anybody knows Mike, probably still has the first nickel he ever made, to be quite honest with you. So, but we're very conservative. If you look at our staffing levels in just about any department in the city, we're well below what might be considered the norm if you look at number of employees per thousand, whether it's police or fire, those kind of things. Again, we're a different type of community in terms of the economics of our community. So we have, we don't have the same policing issues maybe that other communities of 44,000 people might in other parts of the state. So that allows us to staff a little differently. But we're very conservative in, in our expenditures. And we always underestimate revenues considerably and are conservative in our expenditures. And so at the end of the year, we often have several million dollars left over. And that's really our only funding source for capital items. We don't have a dedicated revenue source for road projects or other types of large capital items. So we have to do that in order to generate the revenue. And so last year, I think, the end of fiscal year 18 that ended back in June, I think we ended up somewhere in the neighborhood of $8 million of excess revenue. Some of that flows to the bottom line and, and the reserve funds. But a lot of that, at the end of each year, we asked the City Commission to transfer over forward to the next year. And that's what funds a lot of our road projects. But really, it's, and some of our staff are here, and they would tell you, they'd love to have more people in their departments. But most of them have been around long enough that they know that, that's, that's not the way we do business. And we add staff when we need to, don't get me wrong. But it's a very meaningful thought process to even add one position in our city. And the mayor can tell you at our, our May Budget Work Sessions, we will, I don't want to say argue, but we will discuss every new position. Now, if it's police or fire, let's face it, everybody loves them, so there's not a lot of discussion about adding police and fire. But we're just very conservative, and, and that comes from the direction of the commission. Because I was facing a lot of communities, if the City Commission knew that you were gonna have several million dollars of money left over at the end of the year, a lot of them will be trying to find a way to spend that and make people happy. And that's not the way our commission works. They, and that's the way I think our residents expect us to be, too.
Mayor Bergen, any further thoughts on that?
I mean, I don't want Kirk to undersell the staff on that, because we, we give them the direction, but they are really, really great at what they do. And it is intentional. And I think that the, the reason Brentwood seems so quiet is because of all that planning and foresight. And it's, it's, it's important, I think, to provide people with services and, and so that they don't have to think about it. They don't have to wonder, you know, why is this not happening? Why are the roads in such bad shape? Why are the streetlights not working? I mean, we, it just happens because they plan for it. And so I think that keeping resident services covered is at the top of the list. And we like to do more with less. And I get, that's really our guiding policy.
2019's a big year for Brentwood. Coming up, 50 years. What, it sounds like there's $55,000 in the budget for a big party? What's going on next year?
Boy, did we have to work hard to get that money to celebrate with just a party. But no, I'm just kidding. And we, I feel really blessed to be able to be mayor during Brentwood's 50th anniversary as a city. And I can't believe it, but it's just, it's gonna be very exciting. And a lot of folks don't even know Brentwood is a city. It's funny, in my, in my job, as I go around, a lot of people think it's just a neighborhood of Nashville, or, you know, just a, a little suburb or whatever. But it's been a really great chance for us to look back at what Brentwood has been over the years and what we want it to be. And I really want to give a little shout-out here to our Community Relations Director, Deanna Lambert, here. And she's been working very hard on planning all these celebrations. We're gonna have stuff going all year round, but starting off in April, we're gonna have a parade through Maryland Farms. We want to start to get the word out about that. Then in June, we're gonna have a big community festival, huge, day-long thing at Crockett Park with multiple bands in a row. We're gonna have, working on having a beer garden there, a lot of kids' activities separately. I mean, Brentwood's really stepping up, y'all, I'm telling you. It's a big deal. And then in October, we're gonna have a fancy party at Ravenswood Mansion, which is our historic home that the city owns in Smith Park. So all of this is to celebrate the city, but also, there's gonna be some fundraising involved so that hopefully, at the end of the year, we have some money left over for a gift to, to the residents to be a lasting memento of the 50-year celebration.
Sounds good. Sounds good. Is that gonna be an open bar at the Beer Garden?
We're working on the details for that.
No taxpayer dollars.
Definitely not.
That's great. One of the notable things going on that I've kind of been watching is the construction at the Brentwood High School Middle School campus and all that's going on there. The, tell us about the STEM building and what all it's gonna do for the Brentwood High Campus, Brentwood Middle Campus.
It's been real, I'll talk a little bit and then turn it over, let you talk to you. But it's been really exciting to see that happen. And, I mean, Brentwood High is such a pillar of our community. And Brentwood Middle, formerly Northside Junior High School back in the day, so many folks have gone through those two schools. And we've had a lot of folks who've graduated from there and come back. And our, even our city attorney is one of those. We've got a school board member here, an alumni of Brentwood High School. And it's just really great to see folks coming back and to settle in Brentwood. But appreciate the work of the county schools to, you know, really kind of upgrade the campus there. Because even though they managed to have an older building, the work that goes inside that building has been unbelievable with the quality of education that they're turning out there at Brentwood High School. So to see the STEM building, I think it's a really great use for that site. It's a good way to tie together the two campuses where the, the corner there is really stressed with the number of people who come, go there every day. But it's a really great way to upgrade facilities that need to be upgraded while leaving the campus intact and not really disrupting as much student life there. And I don't know if you want to add?
Yeah, I'll just add that, that campus there, Brentwood High and Brentwood Middle, obviously is one of the older campuses in the district. And I know there's still future plans, hopefully, for some, I guess, almost a rebuild of Brentwood Middle School. And so that's something that, you know, is STEM building kind of buys some time for student-wise, but long-term, we know there's gotta be some other renovations there. And the city was a partner in that project. And I won't go into all the, the details of all that, but there was a lot of controversy and some questions about the, the county being able to come up with the funding for that project. And the City Commission was willing to step up and add a little money into that project to try to make it happen. And we partnered with them. And we got some things out of it from the-
About $2.5 million?
About $2.4 million. But out of that, we've got access to the football field now that's got turf on it for some of our recreational uses when it's not being used by the school. And, and the new access road at the back off of Granny White, I think, really has helped a lot of things. So there were some overall community benefits that we felt justified in trying to provide some funding to help kick-start that process.
Okay, so to use Tom Lawrence's term, can I throw a curveball here? Sounds like Brentwood High and Middle are doing a great job. And, but yet, you're spending a couple hundred thousand dollars to study a Brentwood Municipal School District. Why?
Well, we're not spending a couple hundred thousand dollars. That, there was a discussion and a proposal to do that. But when, when the final vote came at the City Commission Meeting to approve the contract to do the study, that motion failed. So for now, that study's not underway. But it, in all honesty, it could come back up, to be quite honest with you. Depends on what happens with the school district. If things don't proceed at Brentwood Middle School, as far as the timely renovation of that, I expect the Citizens Group that was originally discussing that, probably will be back at the City Commission level. So it's, it's a moot point now. And really, it's a moot point, to be quite honest with you, I think. And again, not talking the political side of it, but just the, the reality of it all. Until some clarity is provided at the state legislature relative to, how would it really work if, if a municipality like Brentwood created its own city school district? You've got the example in Shelby County, about the dynamics and the factors there were different. So one of the reasons I think the study didn't move forward in Brentwood is because there was unknowns about the transfer of property and those kind of things that even the best study wouldn't have been able to answer those. And those are the fundamental questions that would have to be answered before the community could ever make an informed decision. And that really comes down to, and I know Sam's here, is, is there any clarity in the state legislature as to how that process would work? And right now, the law doesn't provide anything, and there's no real legal precedent to go on. So that certainly was a factor when it came down to the final decision, is the fact that even with a $200,000 study, with a firm that was very qualified to do a very good detailed study, that fundamental answer was not gonna be provided by the study, through no fault of the firm. It was just no clarity on how that would happen. So there's some things in state law. And again, until a few years ago, the state law wouldn't have even allowed cities to consider creating a municipal school district. They were prohibited. The law was changed to more or less allow what happened in Shelby County. And so TASSER, which is the Tennessee Advisory Commission on Intergovernmental Relations, is studying the issue. They'll come back with some recommendations for the state legislature, and depending on the direction they go, whether there's some clarity on that, if it ever does come up, we'll see what happens.
Mayor, any-
Definitely have a comment. Because the questions that caused folks to come to us, to encourage us to do the study are still there. We have a large group of residents who are, do have concerns, just mainly financially, that the tax money that they're investing is not really helping the schools in their own communities, that it's going out to schools farther out in the county where so much of the growth is happening. And they want to see results in their own part of town. They were tired of the concerns about rezoning, and rezoning being the only potential way to resolve the crowding problems up in that part of the county. So they were, they were looking for a way to have their money actually go to the schools where their kids were. And I wasn't, I wasn't interested really in seceding from Williamson County schools. I was interested in the study to give them some answers. But once we realized that even with this firm doing the study as well as they could, some of those questions can't be answered right now. So I'm looking forward to the legislature working on that to resolve, help us, help the county resolve those funding issues.
Right. Okay, good. Good color on that. I never, didn't really understand the, the background there and appreciate your providing that. Let's take an imaginary tour around the city, starting with the intersection of Franklin Road and, and Old Hickory. I was thinking about this and I was gonna ask you about, would you like to have Noble's Restaurant back? And then I got to think, that's not even in the city of Brentwood, where the Walgreens now is. How does, how does that work? I mean, are, do y'all have a, do y'all have a, a discussion going on with Metro over what goes on there on Old Hickory, or?
I think if you ask most people, they say it doesn't work, to be quite honest with you. But yeah, Old Hickory Boulevard and Franklin Road, that intersection, is not in Brentwood, although most people think it is. Most people think all of Old Hickory Boulevard is. And none of Old Hickory Boulevard is in Brentwood. It's all in Davidson County. That's also a state route, which adds a little bit of complexity to the thing. So we worked with Metro as best we can. A couple of years ago, we worked with them and got some federal money to do a, a traffic study of the whole northern area. So the Maryland Farms corridor, northern part of Franklin Road and the Old Hickory Boulevard corridor, really looking not really at physical improvements, but more the operation of the traffic signals and how do we coordinate traffic better. And as a result of that, we did implement some traffic signal timing plans where we tried to be better coordinated. The problem is, we're not, the systems aren't connected physically in terms of the wires, so to speak. So the timing plans were great. We have a little bit, and I don't mean this negative to Metro, we've got a little bit more sophisticated signal operation system than they do. All of our signals are connected by fiber. We've got an operation center where someone can manipulate the signals from their home, on their computer, or whatever the case would be. Now, again, we've got, whatever we've got, 47 signals. They've got 1,047 signals. So to say that they're not quite as sophisticated, you understand. But, so we've even had talks with them years ago about interconnecting the systems and even letting us control them. Now, as you can imagine, across political boundaries, there's a little bit of turf concerns about control of signals and that kind of stuff. So we're not near to that. But we do communicate. If there's an incident on I-65, we do have a coordinated timing plan that we all kind of switch to, flip the button, so to speak. And so our folks can call the Metro Public Works and say, hey, we need to switch to this plan. And we do that. The reality is, if something's going on on 65 and it's shut down, manipulating the signals isn't gonna change the traffic very much. But it's an effort. So we try. But, and that's part of our problem with Maryland Farms traffic and all that. Everybody says, well, just, you know, if you're in Maryland Farms trying to get out to Franklin Road, you know, at 5:15, 5:30 at night, sometimes it gets quite a ways backed up. And they all say, well, just turn all the lights green on Maryland Way. Well, that's great. But eventually, you gotta get to Franklin Road. And people on Franklin Road are across the street to that, and you can't just keep them red. So it's a, and everybody says, well, just give more green to here. And we all say, well, if I give more green there, it's less green somewhere else. I can't make time at an intersection. So it's, it's a balance. And really, at, at certain times of the day, it's just a volume issue that you really can't manipulate the signals anyway. And, and we're so dependent on what happens on the interstate.
Yeah.
If the interstate's flowing well, things work pretty well. If there's any backups on the interstate, everybody gets off and then it's, it deteriorates quickly.
Now, in our visit with John Schroer, the T-Dot Commissioner, he alluded to some, some looks that are going on over that entire interchange there with I-65. Is there anything imminent on that, on the plans there?
I wouldn't say imminent. They are doing some work, I think, on the northbound 65 exit ramp to go east, some safety improvements to extend some laneage there. And that will help some. Long-term, one of the things that came out of the study we did with Metro is, is to look at it, a complete redesign of that interchange into what's more of what some people call a divergent diamond. Where basically what you're trying to do is get rid of the left turns. You know, if you think about that interchange, in the evenings, the predominant flow is people coming out of Maryland Farms, going east on Old Hickory, trying to turn left to go north on I-65, or coming the other way and turning left to go. So that left-turning movement, and all the time you've gotta give on, on a green signal for that left-turning movement, when everything else on Old Hickory's gotta stay on red, is, is really the problem. So we've looked at options to try to redesign that interchange to get rid of the left-turn lanes. The big problem is, is if you've ever driven by there, there's a big rock in the southeast corner of that interchange.
Big one.
And, and that interchange, if, again, you maybe not look at it, is skewed because of that rock. So to redesign it in a way that meets all the federal highway and all the T-Dot standards and all that stuff, you gotta kind of start taking down that big rock. And that's a challenge.
Elon Musk has a tunneling machine. Maybe you could borrow that and-
Well, if you, if you listen to John Schroer, the autonomous vehicles are gonna solve all the problems, so we won't have to-
Good luck on that.
No offense to John, don't anybody tell him I, we'll never get another project anywhere.
We, the Hill Center, again, a couple of years ago, that was quite controversial. Kel, I just can't get comfortable in this chair this morning. So we're gonna ditch it. The, the Phase 1 seems to have gone well. It's fully occupied, for the most part, it appears. And now we're getting ready to do Phase 2. What does that consist of and what's gonna change?
Yeah, as the mayor said earlier, that center, I think, now, you're always finding somebody maybe who has a different opinion. But I think the vast majority of people in Brentwood really are happy with the way that center turned out. So Phase 2 is a, one is a hotel, which will be kind of opposite across the street from the Taco Bell there, right at the East Park, Maryland Way Interchange. It's a Marriott branded hotel, AC Hotels. And then there's a new office building that'll be kind of in the southwest corner there. State Volunteer Mutual Insurance Company, which is in Maryland Farms, right now, is the lead tenant on that one. Then there'll be a parking garage, two-level parking garage, not as high as the one that's there today. And then out in front of the existing garage and the new garage will be some more retail, one-story retail liner of things along there. And that won't, that'll be about 90%. There's still room for another building or so in there. But that'll get you most of the way built out.
Right. Okay. And then down on the far end of Maryland Farms, you've got a new office building going up now. And that's the VACO and Core Civic?
Core Civic, yeah. It's the, it's the, there's, everybody knows where tractor, hopefully, everybody knows where Tractor Supply is. That was, but when that, it's called Virginia Springs. Technically, it's not part of the Maryland Farms legal plat-type stuff, but most people identify everything up there as Maryland Farms. So, but when Tractor Supply Development was approved, it was actually four buildings. So Tractor Supply took two buildings for their store support center. And so this is the first of the remaining two buildings that have been approved. And it's under construction. I think occupancy will be sometime later in 2019. But VACO, which is a Nashville-area company, is moving their headquarters there. And then Core Civic is moving from Green Hills into that building.
And once those properties are built out, is that pretty much it for Maryland Farms area?
It really is. You know, and we're starting to see now, and that's, was one of the questions when we were going through our, what is now our 2030 Plan redo, is, you know, what's, what is the future of Maryland Farms? Because 25 years ago, Maryland Farms was the it-place in terms of building parks when you get outside of Nashville. And then Cool Springs came. And now Berry Farms. And then eventually in Spring Hill, the Alexander property, whatever happens there. So, you know, Maryland Farms is now a little dated. So the question became really, would, would property owners in- really, would, would property owners invest in those buildings and redevelop them? And so far, the answer has been yes. You'll see in this couple of the original buildings there, Maryland Farms 1, 2, and 3, that the Boyle Group owns there, just as you're coming into the park on the right side, just past McDonald's. And that basically gutted one of those buildings and completely redoing it. So thankfully, right now, at least it seems that the, the market is still there. Again, the Cool Springs rental rates are going to be, always be more than Maryland Farms, which again, maybe is beneficial to the long-term market viability of Maryland Farms. But so far, you know, people have been willing to reinvest in those buildings and there's still an interest in being there.
Right. Mayor, any?
I've appreciated the fact that there's been a lot of Brentwood-based companies that have, that started there and have stayed there. And Vaco's moving from their existing Maryland Farms building. And LMC, in that flagship building right on the corner of Maryland Way and Franklin Road, just started about 30 years ago by some Brentwood residents. They're still there. They've grown incredibly. So, just really proud of that fact. And I think the one thing that Maryland Farms will always have going forward is that incredible location proximity to Nashville. So I don't worry about the investment value of it because I know that, you know, you're not going to be able to change that. And people are always going to want to be there.
Occupancy rates there are pretty good, aren't they? Still good. Moving on down Franklin Road, well, backing up just a minute, you've got a new hotel going on in Town Center, right across from the Hill Center. How many hotels do we need?
It's funny you ask that because I'm on the board of the County Convention and Visitors' Bureau. And, you know, we just met Wednesday.
Glad I asked.
The numbers of, the number of hotel rooms that they are in the pipeline in the Nashville area is incredible. I think there's still about 4,000 rooms slated to be built in the Nashville area. So even the, even the folks on that board are a little surprised at that. But I don't know, how many do we need? People don't, I think a lot of people underestimate how many folks travel to Brentwood for business, stay there overnight. But also, there are sports teams that come in for tournaments, stay there, youth sports that stay there. And a lot of folks who don't want to spend $300, $400, $500 a night in Nashville come to Brentwood to stay when they're visiting Nashville.
Right. Talking to one of the engineers at Middle Tennessee Electric recently, I think there are nine, either in some part of the planning stages or construction phases in, in Cool Springs. And I just look and I think, wow, lots of, lots of visitors. But the, coming down Franklin Road now to the Omen property, there, I always thought it was part of the Cal Turner property there at the intersection Franklin Road and Concord Road. But there are really three or four separate residences there on large acreages. And one of those y'all have just approved, like it's 24, 29 acres, and several large residential lots there. It's kind of the crown jewel of Brentwood there, that when Cal Turner tried to develop the, the big piece, looked like it would never happen. How did, how did that happen?
I do think that, kind of like the assumptions people make about Old Hickory Boulevard, people just assume that big green space is all one property. But like you said, there are a few property owners there. And the Omans have been there for so long, but they, you know, like anybody, they are ready to sell. They were ready to sell, I guess. And so they found a willing buyer who saw an opportunity. And I think that once folks realized that they didn't have to go, that there was an opportunity to live on that main corridor there, they were apparently, from what I read in the Tennessean, they were ready to jump on it.
Right. So when will that start? Is it pretty much getting ready to start?
Yeah. So the rezoning was approved, I guess, back at the end of September, I think. So it's 21 lots, I think, as you said, on 29 acres. And really, the rezoning, it, it's the same number of lots had it been rezoned or not rezoned. But by rezoning it, you're able to design it in a way that's a little more aesthetically. You get a buffer along Franklin Road and that kind of stuff. And a traffic light, which depending on where you live, is good or bad depending. But, so it'll start, I think it's actually, they'll have their preliminary plan on the Planning Commission agenda here on November 5th, I think it is. So I would expect you'll start seeing construction activity, you know, sometime in the first quarter of 2019. They are going to maintain the existing Omen House. And so that will be one of the, of the 21 lots. So someone could actually purchase that home. And along Franklin Road, there are essentially between the buffer and the lot space will be three-acre lots. And then back in, they're all one-acre lots. So even though it was rezoned to OSRD, which allows for smaller lots, all the lots are actually one acre or greater. And again, as the mayor alluded to, if you read the Tennessean, I think the minimum lot, lot price, not house, lot price is 750,000. And I think the homes are expected to be between $2 million and $7 million. So probably not going to hurt property values in the area.
Few more property taxes there. You can collect on those. And then, of course, the Franklin Road improvements themselves are something you can't miss when you're headed up that way. What's the, I think it's going to be a five-lane all the way from Moore's Lane to Concord?
Yeah, actually, the project extends south into Franklin a little bit, south of Moore's Lane. So it will transition back to the two lanes, a little bit south of Moore's Lane. But yeah, it'll be a five-lane section. So Franklin Road, all the way through Brentwood, will be five lanes at that point in time. It also includes a multi-use trail on the east side of Franklin Road from Moore's Lane to Concord, which again, we have nothing really now much on the south side of Concord Road on the west side of town, west of I-65. So that'll be the start of what we hope to expand as part of the Omen rezoning you just mentioned. And the traffic signal installation there, we're looking at how do we extend that bike pedestrian connectivity from Concord Road where the, where the Franklin Road project will end, on up to Murray Lane. And so we're factoring that in the design of both that subdivision and the traffic signal there. So, but it's, that's a state project. We partnered with them. We did the engineering and bought the right-of-way. So we've got about $4 or $5 million of city taxpayer money invested in that. The state is doing the construction, which is somewhere around $30 million. So far, it's not been too bad. You know, they're, it was two-lane road. They're keeping two lanes open for the most part. So traffic is slower, but it's, it's moving through there. But they really haven't even begun road construction yet. They're just doing drainage and utilities. So you've got another two to three years of that project.
Two to three years?
Yeah.
Wow.
It's a challenging project. There's a, the utility coordination was significant out there. And they're still working through those issues. You've got, as you get more towards Moore's Lane, you've got commercial activities. So the properties are a little closer. A lot of that commercial activity, some of the used car lots, some of the landscaping stuff down there, all that was really parking on right-of-way. So there's adjustments for those businesses and that kind of stuff. So it's a significant project, but one that's needed.
We've, we're halfway through my notes and we're, we've got 10 minutes left, or five, if we let the audience ask questions. But moving on around fairly quickly, Costco's getting a car wash. That's, that's news.
Those are the kind of big things we'd like to be known for, so.
Very excited about that.
You know, all the car washes are on the Franklin side of the, the city line right now. So y'all gonna steal some of their business? You wouldn't say that. Anything going on with the Flagpole property? I hadn't heard anything about it lately. But the Flagpole property, folks, is the property along the interstate north of Moore's Lane.
And really, and that's a piece of property that most people, other than passing it by on I-65, really never go back and see. So really, that, that was another piece of controversial property over the, you know, the last 20-plus years in Brentwood. And that really, that one really has been put to bed because with the approval, gosh, back in 2010, 11, something like that, where the Mallory Park development got some additional land, rezoned to commercial, and then turned the rest of the property over to the city. And we, a couple of years ago, opened up two parks there. They're two separate parks. They're connected by a pedestrian trail. So we've got, Flagpole Park is on the nor, or the southern side there. And it's got a couple soccer fields.
Right.
And then it connects over to what's called Wykel Park, which is at the end of Wykel Road. And it's more of a neighborhood park for the couple neighborhoods down there. And then the Mallory Park development is really not quite built out, but almost close. It's kind of become the luxury car dealership mecca of Middle Tennessee.
Right.
Audi, Mini Cooper, BMW, Maserati, Porsche, help me out here, guys. Huh? Tesla, you know, I mean, well, no, Tesla's across, but Bentley. And so, you know, we all said, you know, you can't see it. How do people know to come there? And what the dealers say is they don't just drive by and decide to go shop a Maserati. They come there intentionally. So they will find their way there if they know where to go. So, and that's really turned out, I think, different than maybe we all thought it might.
Yeah.
There's also been a couple of office buildings, kind of back office building. Corum Health is back in there. And it's really turned out good. There's one empty parcel still left that is the old, for those who've been around, the proposed Harley-Davidson site, which was another point of controversy several years ago.
Right.
So that, there is one more site in there and a couple of other small little tracks. But that really, I think, is, another example is the mayor referenced really with Hill Center, where you get one proposal on the first go-around that stirs up a lot of controversy. Everybody kind of takes a step back, talks a little more, works with the neighborhood. And you, you end up with a proposal that everybody likes and really ends up being very beneficial for the community.
Right. Couple other notable, I think, developments that I noticed, the Prim property on Moore's Lane, kind of a historic property. And I'm sure there was a lot of discussion about that. But now I think that's been approved. Is that correct?
The western half, which is more of the, the back half of that property, which doesn't have the old home on it, has been rezoned and there will be a neighborhood built on it. It's, you know, honestly, when I first moved here, that property was my dream property. I would have loved to have been able to buy it and restore that house and live there on that beautiful tract of land. But, you know, that's, reality has hit me since then. So, but I feel like that's one of those tracts of land that folks drive past every day and are glad it's there and see it, but don't realize that the house has absolutely fallen apart. It's, it's, it's sad to see it in that state. So part of the difficulty with that process is there are a lot of heirs, family heirs, who are part owners of that tract. And so I guess there was some decision-making over the years that had to take place. But just like when you own your home, your, your yard, they have a piece of property that they want to do something with. And they're, they're allowed to do that. So part of the process is hearing the idea, seeing if it's right for the community, and then, you know, approving it or not. So that's part of what's difficult about my, about my job, but also the most interesting part, really. I think it'll be a nice, a nice, really nice neighborhood. And the developer has agreed to restore these two historic slave cabins that are on the property that are unique in their design. And I feel like that's a good thing for preserving our history as well.
So is the old house gonna go?
The, the rumor that I have heard is that there may be an individual who is interested in purchasing it and restoring it. But that's just something I've heard. And right now, it's not in play, just that back half of the property.
I see. Great. And you're working with City of Franklin on the McEwen Drive east of Wilson Pike. What are you trying to do there? And how far will it go?
Yeah. And that's a, that's a project that's really been in the works for 10-plus years when we, back in 2006, 2007, we did some boundary adjustments back in that area there. So now Franklin obviously has got higher priorities with McEwen. They're working to get the, the section from the roundabout out to Wilson Pike approved. And they've got some federal money. And that's kind of delayed their schedule to make use of that federal money, which we certainly understand. But long-term, there's an agreement between the two cities to extend McEwen east of Wilson Pike. So the completely new road that would connect up through the backside of the new Tradition subdivision in Morgan Farms in Brentwood, would run on the north side of Breeze Way, which is in Franklin, and, and then connect Terramore. And that would be the first phase of what we're talking about there. We've got to provide, again, a lot of details here. But originally, it was going to be some developer contributions. There were some lawsuits and the developers won those lawsuits. So the city's, City of Brentwood, it's all based upon land area affected and all that. It's got to provide a certain amount of money to Franklin. And then that starts the process of that project. And so we're working with them to not interfere with what they're doing on the, on the first, or I think it's their phase four or five, whatever they call it of McEwen. But to try to time it so that maybe when that phase that's coming out to Wilson Pike is getting done, this other phase can be under construction and nearing completion. Long-term, now then, this is all out in the county, would be to take that McEwen all the way over to Clovercroft Road. Those of you who've been around a while, remember, there's a talk about the old Sam Ridley extension that was going to go from I-65 to, to I-24 in Smyrna.
Right.
This isn't quite it, but it's kind of following at least a portion of that same corridor.
Okay. Good. Madam Mayor, any other comments or things that you'd like to make us aware of or challenge us with?
In terms of excitement, I really want to encourage y'all to pay attention to the events that we have next year for our 50th anniversary as a city. It's been a big deal. We've got a board of 11 residents who have dedicated their time, volunteered their time to make that a really big celebration. And I just want to take a minute to thank those folks who are here, from the city staff. And we've got some Brentwood residents here who serve on the school board. I appreciate y'all coming out this morning. But I just appreciate the opportunity to work with officials from other municipalities around here. Because as you've noticed, there's a lot of intertwining that goes on. You know, there's no gate around, there's a fence around Brentwood. And even though people would like to act like there is, but we are right in between two great cities.
Didn't say that.
With Franklin and Nashville. And it's a great place to be, but it really does require cooperation. And my experience over the past almost eight years now has really been good. There's a lot of folks with really good intentions who are trying to do some good for the area. And I appreciate being a part of that.
Right. Got a good audience out here. Now we've got some questions. Tom Lawrence has got one. Stand up, Mr. Lawrence. Come on.
Wrestling with a utility district is like wrestling a porcupine. Right now, y'all are wrestling with Mill Crofton. Would you come to a deal? Or have you come to a deal?
Tell us what you're talking about.
Well, and again, our city attorney's out here. She's probably trying to text me right now, which is saying, don't say anything. So I can give you the, the facts of the lawsuit is, and it affects this area out in the McEwen Drive area we were just talking about. The Traditions and Morgan Farms subdivisions, which are the very southern edge of Brentwood along Wilson Pike, kind of split log area there, were originally approved back in 2007. And so the dispute is really over what's the, the service area for the Mill Crofton utility district. In 2007, when those subdivisions were originally approved, we believed that they were in the Mill Crofton area. We told the developer to go to Mill Crofton and get a letter saying that they would provide water service to them. Mill Crofton came back and said, we don't think those are in our service area. And so it's up to the City of Brentwood to either serve it. And if they won't, then Mill Crofton would. So based upon that letter, we took it over and have been providing water service as those subdivisions have developed over the last several years. And Mill Crofton is now coming back and claiming that really is in their territory and we're infringing. And they've got some obligations with their funding and federal grants and all that, to try to preserve their area. So that's the, the gist of the lawsuit. They're claiming that we've infringed on their area. We're claiming that, one, the areas are civil districts and the old maps that go back to the 50s and 60s, you can imagine the quality of the maps and trying to apply those maps to today's roads and all that. And the fact that we have a letter from them in 2007 saying it isn't there. So, you know, we're continuing conversations, but we believe that we're on good ground. And so we, we haven't come to any settlements and it'll continue forward. Is that okay, Christian?
Mindy Tate.
So I guess Brentwood taught me all I know about local government, starting with Frank Clifton or T-Mac Blackburn and on through Mike Walker. But if you could go back 50 years ago, most cities are hundreds of years old, like Franklin or something like that. But if you could go back 50 years ago, how would you redraw the city of Brentwood? Or what would you add that you don't have today?
What a great opportunity. You're right. Brentwood is not, Brentwood was created out of some farms. And we do have some physical challenges with the interstate bisecting us. We have a couple of railroad tracks there. But honestly, I, I think people have done a great job. But I think I would increase, it's a neighborhood with a lot of cul-de-sacs, a few neighborhood entrances that all go out onto the same roads. And so I would increase connectivity with the roads, be a little more grid-like, and have a few more ways to get across that interstate. So we're not all on Concord Road and Moore's Lane at the same time. That's, that's, that's my wish list, probably.
And that was exactly my exact same answer. More connectivity, some more east-west connectivity and more neighborhood connectivity.
Questions? Seeing none. Questions? Seeing none. Kell, excuse me, sir. My boss.
Two quick plugs. Early voting continues in Tennessee in Williamson County through November 1st. Their sites open countywide, election day is 11/6. And please, for information on voting locations, candidates, and whatnot, visit WilliamsonChamber.com/vote. And one more quick plug, a special thanks to Emblem Apartments today for our coffee and pastries. They've been good to us, kept us caffeinated every Friday at Town Hall. So my quick question is, you know, we're so fortunate, not only for our elected officials throughout Williamson County, but also on the technical side, our town and city administrators and managers. We're also joined by Jay Evans, Assistant City Manager today. Mayor and Kirk, if you don't mind, I'd love to hear a bit about the working relationship between the city manager and the mayor, where both meet, where both diverge, and just kind of how that works when leading the City of Brentwood.
I appreciate that question. And as Kirk said earlier, every city does it differently. And in Franklin, Ken Moore is a popularly elected mayor and has the Board of Aldermen. And I'm elected to the City Commission, and then we vote in our first meeting after an election among the seven of us to choose a mayor. And so, but the common denominator there is that both cities are very fortunate, I was just talking to somebody about this the other day, to have very professional, educated city manager, city administrator with Eric Stuckey and with Kirk here. Because, you know, we're like the Board of Directors in Brentwood, but he's like the CEO, and he's really making those everyday decisions that we're giving them direction. But he's in there every day with the staff. And Jay, especially with his tremendous background. And there's no substitute, honestly, because our city commission, we've got some folks who stepped up to run for office. But we all have diverse backgrounds, and we all have a will to serve. But we don't all necessarily have that professional background to do what it takes to run a city of 45,000 people. So I'm thankful every day that we do have Kirk.
Smooth relationship, it seems. And congratulations on that. Mindy Tate, you've got a big series of events going on next week with Franklin Tomorrow. And we want you to explain that to us in two minutes.
Thank you. I can do that. So next week, we have 20 public events kicking off with Breakfast with the Mayors on Tuesday morning for our new On the Table initiative. And On the Table is really an opportunity for the community to come together, those who live, work, play, worship, or study in Franklin, to come together and talk about what's important to them and what's important to the future of our community. And so we invite everybody to go to FranklinTomorrow.org backslash On the Table, and look at the 20 public events and choose one or more. You can eat free for three days, breakfast, lunch, and dinner. And then there's even snack time every day, too. So it's a great opportunity to come together, meet someone new. There's no agenda at the table. We have some conversation starters, but we have learned to trust the table. We kick off the conversation with a question, but the conversation doesn't usually need any prodding after that in our practice sessions. So we're excited. But it kicks off with Breakfast with the Mayors on Tuesday. And you can go to FranklinTomorrow.org backslash On the Table and learn more, and click on the Join the Conversation tab to see the 20 public sites across Franklin.
Question. Is this anything like the vision? Is it 2020 or 2030 now that Brentwood went through a visioning process a couple of years ago? Is that sort of what we're trying to do?
Well, Franklin Tomorrow is a, our mission is to engage the community, foster collaboration, and advocate for a shared vision for the future of Franklin. This is what the citizens see as the shared vision for the future of Franklin. The Board of Mayor and Aldermen and others set their strategic plan and move forward. We will have this input and be able to share that with elected officials, with the community. And that will drive our work in what we do as an engagement and visioning organization over the next couple of years.
Thank you, Mindy. Two more questions, and then our time will be up. But any prognostications, predictions about the November 6th elections, as they relate to Brentwood?
It's going to be, it's, I'm glad that folks are engaged, because it's a big deal, especially at the state level. I was at a GNRC meeting recently where we had a consultant talking to us about how many new people there will be in political positions here in the state. And I think at the legislature, they're going to have 24 brand-new legislators there, state representatives. And there's going to be a new Speaker of the House, new Speaker of the Senate, and a brand-new governor. So it's a really big deal. And I think it's good, it bodes well that folks are engaged in turning out to vote.
Helps that some of our leaders here in Williamson County are in play for some of those leadership positions.
You really can't take that for granted, because it's, it's a big deal for our county. And I mean, I know, I'm well aware that a rising tide doesn't lift all boats. And I think the folks at the state level are, they know that, that not all counties in Tennessee are experiencing the growth that we have here. But I'm proud of the folks that are representing us there.
Representative Sam Whitson, would you like to give us a prediction on what the House leadership's going to look like and the Senate leadership?
No. It's going to be a big change, as Jill said. First, I want to say, even though it's not in my district, Jill and Kurt have been really good to include me in their events up there in Brentwood. And they're a great crew to work with. And I tell you, though, I think Tom and I, and probably you, makes you feel old when you're older than the city, you know? Because I was in the eighth grade when y'all incorporated. But, and again, Kell's comment about city managers, when I was working on my graduate degree, I had a book, I still remember it, and I've ordered extra copies called Without Fear, Without Favor. It's about the journey of a city manager. And I gave it to the three city managers. I better get you a copy, too. And it was just, it's a really tough job in a political environment. And I just want to take one quick second. Christine and Lynn are going to be joined by, stand up here, young man. This, this is my cousin-in-law. JP is from Michigan. He was a young soldier in the 101st Airborne. He went through my unit a few years after I commanded. Two combat tours overseas, became a Metro Police Officer when he separated from the Army, then went, and he served on the governor's staff as a liaison up there. Now he works with the Vanderbilt crew. And I'm just so proud of him. Even though he's from Michigan, he married my cousin's daughter, and he's just been a great addition to the family. He's going to be a great addition to this team here each month.
Sam, just goes to show you, once we get these Illinois people and Michigan people down here, we can acclimate them pretty good. And they, they actually fit in and do a good job. So we appreciate, appreciate all y'all coming to be with us. The last and not least question is, who's going to win the Centennial Brentwood football game tonight?
Let's see, what would be the right answer for me? I think Brentwood. And we'll pick Ravenwood over Indy tonight, too.
The, we're pulling for Centennial. I'm sure you're pulling for Brentwood. And I hope it just doesn't rain like it did last year. But we really appreciate all the, the folks that are here and the folks that are listening. And we appreciate Encana for the, the breakfast treats and the coffee. And we appreciate Vanderbilt University and Vanderbilt Medical Center for supporting us, and AT&amp;T, and one or two others, Tom Lawrence and AM 950 for getting us on the air, on the AM waves, and always Creed Henderson and Heather and the crew, making us look good on TV. So thank you so much. And also for Columbia State to give us this wonderful venue. So hope you'll be back next, next month. We will have an announcement out here shortly about the, the subject and the visitors next month. So I hope you'll be back to see us then. Thank you.